Believe we are live, sir. Says I'm live on me. Can you see it yet, Pat? Okay. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the council meeting to order. First thing I'm going to ask, is there any agenda changes?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the city attorney Jans could not be with us this evening, so staff would request the removal of the executive session for attorney-client privilege from the agenda. And then, under new business, we would ask for item number four to be added, which is setting of a work session, um, which will have a very specific topic that we will talk about when it's time to set that work session.
Duly noted. Any questions, counsel? All right. I'm gonna open up for public forum at this point. Do not see anybody out there wishing to address the council this evening, so we'll close the public forum. And I'm going to ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda for March 22nd, 2021 as presented.
Second. Heard the motion in the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, motion carries. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. We do not have any unfinished business this evening, so we're gonna move right into new business. And item one is consideration of EMS vehicle and equipment purchase. And I believe Mr. Lowe is here tonight to address the council, so the floor is yours, Andy.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, manager of Rimer. I, uh, this is finishing up what we started a couple months ago. Um, we actually delayed this until we had the medic unit sold to carry those funds over toward this project. Um, in that process, I, uh, I guess I should have paid better attention on how vehicles were ordered, purchased, and made. The, uh, 2021 window closed, and it moved us to the 2022 window. So, we're just working on if approved, getting in line. We won't have these until August or September now. Um, it will just have us in line for the vehicle orders. It'll be a 22. I didn't realize I would have had to been on two weeks ago to catch up last of the 21 changes that they had, so. Right now, I just, we're moving forward on our rescue unit that replaces the ambulance instead of having the three ambulances. It should improve us on our maintenance and our insurance on it. Um, the way we've also calculated on the lifespan of it with mileage and use, this should be one vehicle that roughly two, two and a half ambulance replacements, because it won't be making constant long transport trips as well. Um, we don't have to specialize insure this because it's not actually transporting patients onboard. I did request five bids. I only got two back in. Um, that would be the Olathe Ford bid, and, uh, my apologies, the bid on back that's not stamped is a Mel Hamilton bid. The, uh, and this is just for the chassis portion. The Olathe Ford bid came in at 39 636, and the Mel Hamilton board bid came in at 4680. Not much of a change on the bid, however, uh, Olathe Ford will drop the truck at the body upfitter, which is in Kansas City, where Mel Hamilton wants to charge 300 to move the chassis up there, or else we would have to just drive the chassis up there. Napa Hyde is the one that we bid the box on. That also has, um, a metal platform on the front of that utility box for the light bar mount. Um, I'm talking with the upfitter. They really don't like mounting the light bar on the aluminum cab. It tends to start swaying and bending and cracking cabs. So, we had the upfitter for the, uh, utility box price as a platform for the light bar mount.
Any questions, counsel? Are there any negatives as far as the vehicle purchase, getting the vehicle out of the Olathe area versus Wichita service, et cetera?
Uh, it would still be under the standard Ford warranty program to be serviced at any dealership.
Okay, good. There's no questions. I'd make a motion to approve the quotes from Olathe Ford, Napa Hyde Truck Center and other vendors as needed. The purchase and equip Ford F-350 vehicle is needed for use as a rescue unit for Hallsted EMS fire for a total project amount not to exceed 67,000. Did you get that with the D hooks on that Ford? Those are the hooks in front that a Dodge can get in front of it and pull it?
You mean we can pull the Dodge back?
Okay, you've got the motion, I need a second. There's the second. Uh, we got the motion and second to approve this, uh, EMS vehicle purchase. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, consideration of Wedgewood equipment purchase, and we have Mr. Sam Eberly to address the council this evening.
Mayor, counsel, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. If you saw the packets while I'm talking about the irrigation system, it's kind of weird to talk about that when it's, we've had about three inches of rain. So, um, I have a couple changes that I'm presenting tonight, so I'm gonna hand out these.
Thank you.
Okay, so over the last year, we've done a full audit of our irrigation system. And what we're finding is that the main infrastructure, uh, is in decent shape, decent to good shape. Um, where the problem lies is in the control boxes and sprinklers, which, they're the ones that are outside. They're not underground. They're not covered. That's where you would start to see that. Um, with our current system, it, right now, it's hard to find parts when we need them. Um, and when we do find them, they're very expensive, or they've been refurbished. So, we're not getting new parts. Um, and over the last couple of years, we've spent between $500 and $1,500 to replace these parts on the bock boxes. That's not including, um, having, when we can find somebody to come out and fix it. That's just us ordering the parts, us fixing them themselves. All, we have four controllers on the course. All of them currently have issues ranging from faceplates to wiring. Um, staff has done their best to keep all these irrigation control boxes running and functional. But finding parts on a system that's really not being made anymore is pretty hard. Um, and not having any contact at Toro has made this very difficult. When I started and up to two year, or two years ago, we had a vendor, we had somebody at Toro that I could talk to, that I could service. Last two years, there's, I haven't been able to contact anybody. Everybody I've contacted can't help me out. So, um, it's made it very difficult. Rainbird, which is who has the majority of these bids, has been extremely helpful. Um, great contact throughout the year. We've been looking at doing this for a little while now. Um, answered every phone call, um, answered every email. The Rainbird guy came down today, looked at our system, um, checked everything out, said that what we are proposing is very doable. And, um, they also work on their own boxes, electronics, which Toro would, I haven't been able to get from. And we won't be going through different vendors trying to find these parts. There's different vendors that sell off-brand parts that we've been buying. We get six months to maybe a year out of those parts. So, due to not having calls returned from Toro and having to, we've had to improvise how we do water, so irrigation system's supposed to run at night. We can't run them at night. So, we'd get there early in the morning, turn them on. Well, a lot of people want play in the morning, so we're either not getting it all watered or watering in between players, which is slowing down play, which with the amount of play that we did last year, um, it was bad. Um, the greens do run at night for 10 minutes, which is all we can get to go right at this point. With the new control boxes, we can water all aspects of the course at night. Uh, there is no timeframe that would stop that. So, the first item proposed, which was in the packet, um, is one control box, which would replace the control box on six, which has significant problems. Also purchasing 20 irrigation heads, 17 full circle and three-part circles. On each of these beds, it's always 17 full circles and three-part circles. I just didn't say that every time. Um, this proposal will get us by this year. So, next year, we're going to have to replace another box. Uh, we already show signs of problems on these boxes. Um, so the second proposed item is replacing all four control boxes and purchasing 20 irrigation heads. If we do this, we're saving $1,405 per control box, or buy three, get one free. Uh, this total price would not exceed the 26,000. This proposal would keep us worry-free of what will fail, fail next on the LTC plus program. And there will be no confusion from switching to Toro and Rainbird throughout the day or throughout the year when we're having to go back and forth. And finally, the third item proposed, replacing all four control boxes, adding a central control, purchasing 20 irrigation sprinklers. Total price on this is 46,054.77 cents. What a central control does, it takes the human air out of the irrigation system. Uh, the central maintains the correct flow throughout the different sized irrigation lines with the same pressure. An example of this would be going from a three-inch line to a two-inch line. When it's coming from a three to two, it's gonna project more pressure in that two-inch. So, we're getting different flow rates, too much wire in one area, not enough wire in the other area. With a central, it eliminates that. It maintains the same exact flow through the whole system. Doesn't matter if it's going through four inch to three inch, three inch to two inch. It's the same flow throughout the whole system. Another thing it does is it adds longevity to the system. So, when you have all that pressure one or two times, you know, it's wearing on the pump, it's wearing on the motor, it's wearing on the booster pump, it's wearing on the pipe. When you have the same flow, it's less, um, it's less wear and tear on that. So, um, you're seeing longer lifespans, not only in the control boxes, but also in the main infrastructure of the irrigation system. Uh, but there's still always that chance. We're working with a 20-year-old irrigation system with a 20-year-old motor. Um, there is a chance for it to fail. We'd have to replace it, um, because it hasn't had this system in it before. So, we're not looking at that, uh, to happen because it's worked well. This is just a safety net to carry on that longevity.
So, Sam, real quick, I, I just want to get this straight, because I'm looking at three different recommendations here. So, which one are you recommending? The 13,000, the 26,000?
The 46,000.
The 46.5?
Yep.
Now, when you say you're gonna maintain the same flow across the system, how's that gonna be achieved? Are you changing pumps out with VFDs on them?
So, they all have VFDs on them.
They all have VFDs.
Yep. It's just the worry, 'cause, so, pump station's clear at the front of the course, four greens clear at the very back of the course. So, to get that pressure clear back, it's gonna keep building up pressure because, well, we've dug, we've dug up two and a half inch line, we dug up three inch line, we've dug up two inch line. So, there's different pressure going through. So, what they would do is they build a, what he called a tree, to find out how this pressure's going, and then work the control, or the central to that.
So, you're gonna have pressure sensor on each leg coming off to different zones?
I, I, that's how it sounded.
It'll control the VFDs. And it looks like these controllers must be mounted in four different locations.
Yep.
You've got a 900 megahertz radio system on here. It's so those controllers can communicate.
Communicate with each other. Yeah. I don't have a radio. I don't, so, I personally will not carry a radio around that can, there's irrigation system.
900 megahertz, I, I totally understand what it is. It's strictly an industrial band.
Yeah.
And it's for communications from controllers, PLCs, and things like that. Um, you will have, it looks like maybe a software pack you'd run on a PC somewhere?
Yep.
And that'll have a ma- master radio that will be communicating to your four different controllers.
Yep.
Okay. So, let's either do it this year or do the rest of it next year, right, Sam?
Uh, yeah.
Ethan, in the equipment fund, are we set to do the 46?
Yeah, the equipment fund can handle it. Um, I mean, Sam, and we had this discussion when he brought it up, uh, to answer. Kind of council member Wallace's question of why there's three recommended of, the one in the packet, that was the absolute, we have to do this for the course. Um, then when we saw, you know, as talking, it's like, hey, what are just four controllers that way? All the controllers are on the same, uh, time, and we're insta, we're installed at the, at the same point. We have a good date for that. Then it was 26, and it's like, hey, we should probably put that in front of the council as an option. And then, talking of making the system functional and hopefully getting, uh, increased longevity, uh, by going with 46.5, we can make it work in the equipment fund. Sam will have to look and, and probably make some of his equipment last a little longer in terms of mowers. I mean, it's a bigger hit than anticipated this year, but it's not out of the realm of, you know, a five-year plan type issue.
But one of the goals that we've worked towards, we've all been involved in it, you know, the grasses that he's planted, the number of mowings should diminish, so equipment should last longer. Am I correct in saying this?
Mm-hmm.
And I know we've put a lot of money in the golf course for grasses and, I don't
Well, and we've seen a revenue turnaround in that area, too.
Oh, boy.
So, I, like I said, I don't have a problem.
I expect you to maintain that, too.
I, I don't have a problem, a problem with the 46.5. My only concern is, is with everything else going on and the budgeted transfers and all this, is that gonna put a hit on that equipment fund?
Uh, I don't think it would be detrimental, like, to the point where it would completely, um, you know, throw it off where we couldn't replace equipment. It just, we'll have to look at some of those replacement schedules and say, you know, can you put some of your cheaper mowers, you know? We might need to go farther out on some of the mowers that have a higher price point than some of his others. Or, if he even can delay, you know, one or two years, it should make up that difference.
Well, I think that takes a question to Sam, doesn't it? Uh, do you feel your equipment?
I do. After, I mean, we did an audit this year with all the equipment as well. And I feel, if we're gonna do anything, I think this would be the year to do it. Um, just to, so we're all on the same page here. I'm not gonna hide anything from you. We don't have to do the central this year. It is something that can be added later on. I will tell you, in this price, we're looking at 20,000, or 20,000, I think, for that, or a little under. Expect that to go up if we're just adding that. It's just like the irrigation heads. If you saw in each bid, the irrigation heads got smaller and smaller and smaller with what we bought, um, it, it would be the same expectation. Those prices are just gonna go up and up and up. And also with that, um, computer software, that's only good for one year, uh, or not the software, sorry, that, uh, it's the first line, the stress one-year GSP. It's 5,147. That is what I call an insurance policy. So, that's good for the first year. Um, to renew, we're looking about 2,500 a year, somewhere around in there. What that does is if the computer goes down, they replace it. If something, if an irrigation box goes down, they replace it. So, it's a good, it's a good insurance policy to have, because we're looking, don't have it, irrigation box, there's another 5,000. Now, it also is more about the component, components in that irrigation box as well. So, if the component fails, it's replaced.
That sounds like a good idea to me. Let me put you on the spot a little bit while I've got you here.
Okay.
Uh, some of the equipment that hasn't been used at the golf course for years, we talked about several years ago, have you gotten all that weeded out and sold off on Purple Wave and stuff?
Uh, yeah. I mean, we, I'm waiting for this Purple Wave, and then it's all gone.
Okay, good. I just wanna make sure we keep moving forward on that.
Yep.
Because if we don't use it, we need to get rid of it.
Yep.
Well, if you're good with the first, there's no other questions, I would make a motion to approve the purchase of the 20 irrigation sprinklers and four stations, par plus ES Rainbird, with a price not to exceed 46.5.
Second it.
Heard the motion in second to approve these upgrades for the golf course. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
For your detailed, uh, request.
So, that's a 10% revenue increase off, after this?
20.
20%?
No, I thought 25.
Might be time.
Can I get a 30?
Under three.
Just numbers.
Might be time to give you a solid goal to chase, Sam. Okay, now, we'll move on to item number three, uh, something everybody wants to talk about. Discussion of natural gas rates and billing. And we'll let Ethan kick this off.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, counsel. You, uh, have a copy of both our acceptance, um, with the state loan, uh, utility loan program. The city did apply for the flat 2 million. Um, and then you see our KMG, KMG A invoice, um, which, hopefully you guys can see, the way they do bill that is essentially, you know, they estimate so much upfront, and then you're given credit, uh, for that estimate back. And then you actually have your true-up cost of, of what the month, basically, a, a month in arrears was. Uh, so, the city for the month of February, bill is 2,112,693, or $693. Um, the, of course, the total going to KMG is a little less than that, and that's because of the reversal of those estimated charges, um, that they gave us in February, which you can see they estimated February to only cost us 88,784.60. Um, so, as you can tell, even the, the price point of gas coming out to an average of, uh, $94.68, um, plus transportation costs and other fees on that. I will note, this invoice does not reflect, um, certain fees and charges that the pipelines, uh, are still debating whether or not are going to be charged. Um, so there's another potential 150,000 roughly that might come due to the city at some point. Uh, also note that you do see the $69,000 credit, or just almost $70,000 credit there at the bottom, uh, for that collateral call that we paid in January. Uh, but then, to inform this discussion as we go forward, uh, you all did make the decision not to have that collateral call be part of the January billing. Um, so we do need to decide whether that's going to be assessed, or the city's gonna, um, essentially pay for that out of existing gas funds. Uh, I did send an email to you all over the weekend, kind of discussing three, three major options, uh, to handle this as far as rates go. Um, the first being that you just essentially follow existing city ordinances in place. We figure the cost of gas, which, if we adjust for the collateral call and pass that cost on, would put the per-unit cost of gas at $102.27 a unit. Um, that's everything. That's the city's, uh, you know, s- standard, uh, $3.48 overhead fee, uh, adjust for the transportation costs, management fees, that kind of thing. Uh, if we take out, um, that collateral call, it's about $99.20 a unit. Um, so, on an average home that has, let's say, 18 units of gas consumed, uh, you're talking a, a gas bill only, um, of 1,840.86 cents. So, that would be the first option. Follows existing ordinance. You're, you're assessing that to the, to the home, to the person that consumed the gas or the business. Um, our second option, it would be looking at a surcharge going on in, in perpetuity, uh, on gas. Um, and that essentially, based on the city's, looking at a 10-year historical usage, would fall somewhere between a dollar to a dollar and 10 cents, uh, per unit of gas sold. So, uh, we would, for February, have to figure out, you know, an approximate billing and, and figure out a rate we felt comfortable charging, uh, first off, which kind of would get us, uh, started as far as on this loan payback. Um, but then rolling forward, on top of the city's normal overhead, you're gonna have this surcharge fee, um, that obviously would impact higher, uh, users on a more frequent basis than, than others. And you would see things like, summer bills would be slightly higher than normal. Um, overall, there is some risk with this of just, with summer usage being down, um, you know, there's, the city would have to be actively monitoring to make sure we can make our ongoing monthly payments back to the state. Um, but that surcharge, again, uh, would last, um, and that dollar to a dollar 10, that's assuming that we tried to spread that cost over the full 10 years, um, going forward. And then, our last option would be to just look at the number of meters in the system and break it down as a flat fee going forward there. And, again, because we don't know what the modified billing for February would be, um, we would look at somewhere between $17.50 to $22.50 per meter per month. And again, that's gonna be per meter per month for 10 years. Um, so, you would have, um, roughly looking at, uh, the, the three options on a normal February, you know, the option one's the 1,840.86. Option two with the surcharge would, would see prices probably, assuming gas was at a normal level, be at 1,46.88. And option three would be 1,49.58. But two and three, you're talking that 1,46.88 or 1,49.58 staying over the course, you know, that's not just one month, and then it falls in summer. That's, you're looking at a $150 gas bill for many months to come type issue, um, especially on option three. Option two has a little more wiggle room depending on how much gas a consumer would use. So, those are the big options. Uh, as far as the loan itself, just again for transparency, if the city takes all 10 years, um, to repay the loan, the total cost of the loan would be 2,025,312.48 cents. And we are looking at payments roughly of 16,877.60 a month. Um, so, depending on when that term starts. And that's, I give you that number because that is the number we need to ensure we make. I know, uh, one of the questions that was asked was, you know, if we got a lot of payment upfront, if we just build out the amount, um, yeah, the city would have to visit with the state, uh, to make sure, but we would have to hold a certain portion of that back to make sure we were getting through the summer months when consumption falls down, uh, just to make sure we can make those payments. We also have a question into the state to see, um, depending, according to the program, first payments are due in July, but if we would see, you know, a, a lot of payment towards this, if the city can basically pay down and then kind of rework the terms to maybe lower that monthly amount. But we have not got a firm answer on that yet. So, basically putting it out there for you all of, um, how do you want us to go about billing for this? Because, uh, obviously, for, for our consumers, I mean, you're talking, I would say, the small side of bills are gonna be $500, and we will probably see residences any, uh, anywhere from 500 to 2,500, depending on their home and how much gas they use that month. And our businesses and large industrial users, obviously, are talking about costs well beyond that. And if we do, do the first option, one of the main things we were looking for you all, again, we have confirmed with our software company, um, that we can bill this out and separate, you know, this amount as a, a separate line item on utility bills going forward. But, at some point, we need to put a finite time. Um, the software company says that we can put as many months in there as we want. Obviously, I would say, we wouldn't want to go more than 10, because that's the term of the loan. Um, but there are other considerations, such as, we increase the chance of debt loss, um, the longer out we allow people to take payments. Um, I mean, to put it in perspective, if someone had to finance, and I shouldn't say finance, because there's no finance fee that the city is charging to residents or anything like that, the interest on this loan, we will have to, you know, basically subsidize through operational cuts in the gas budget to make those payments. But, we need to, um, if somebody needed $2,000 extended, and we let them go, say, five years, that adds $33.33 a month on their bill, uh, going forward. So, but that is something, again, we could allow. We just need a max time. If somebody came to us, the first option allows us to be a little, um, we can work with residents based on the, uh, ability to pay. So, if somebody only needs 12 months, we can make that work for them, where if somebody needs five, or 60 months, we can make that work. So. Where if somebody needs five or 60 months, we can make that work. So.
So you can flex by customer. More versatility in option one.
Yeah, as far as for the customers, yeah, I mean, everyone, every account is essentially treated the same under option two or three, no matter how much you use. And that's two would essentially just, if you're a heavier user, you're gonna fill that surcharge more than people who are not heavy users. So really, especially on the industrial side, you know, that, I don't know many of our businesses that wanna sign up to take that major hit, especially because many of them did cut down their own usage during this month. So it's actually, if you look at our total MMBTU that came through the city gates, we used less MMBTU in February than we did in January, which most of that is due to the fact that we had our largest users curbing use pretty heavily for about three to five days. So.
I think before we make a decision, it's important to know if the state will rewrite our loan. If we bill like we normally do, which I would encourage, if the revenues end, if we can be applied to this loan to reduce that debt load, reduce our $17,000 a month obligation for monthly interest payments to a lower number, that'll help us going forward. Two things bother me. Number one, what if it happens again next January or February? And that's a scary, scary thought. Number two, we're guaranteed this 0.25 up till what, January of next year? And as of January next year, the way everything is heading and interest rates are increasing, if we go from 0.25% to, say, 2%, and we've got a $17,000 nut to crack every month, thank, I mean, that, I didn't run the numbers on it, but in my mind, that could take us well over $26,000, $27,000 nut to crack. I would encourage to go with our standard billing, collect from the people, you know, that can afford to pay, make the payment, get out from under it, and work with whomever needs to be worked with to help get payments out.
I agree with that. I think, I think we need to know as individual customers, how much our bill is. And the only way to do that is with the normal billing structure that we have. As an example, I have a rental house. My renter has come to me and said, I have saved my tax return. I have saved my stimulus payment. I'm gonna pay my gas bill off when it comes due. That's a tenant that I have. And I think there are more people that are going to be able to pay their full amount and not have to carry out as a loan. But we won't know till we.
Well, and I, and I think we, like Mr. Farmer said, and like you've said too, I think we need to do it just like we normally would. And those people that can't pay, they can reach out to the city and we can set terms for them. I would hate to see anything go past 48 months, to be honest with you.
And the other side of that coin, Mike, if we go a month or if we go two months and we see that things aren't happening like we would, that we need to have happen, we can go back in at that time and we can alter what we do on billing. We can, we can adjust.
Yep. I just hate to see us adding a surcharge onto those that, you know, that can pay it and they're gonna be stuck paying that surcharge for a while. And the same thing with our industrial customers too, right? They need to pay their bill that they've incurred and not have to basically subsidize everybody else that's paying.
And they need to know what that bill, what that amount is. And if they need to have to apply for monthly payments, come to the city and apply.
I read a letter to the customers from one city today and it basically established a surcharge per customer above the normal rate subject to increases as necessary. It really left a big open window and if I were a customer, I mean, I'd be concerned about it. And I'd like to keep things as stable as we can, you know, black and white until we can't do it.
Well, and also as far as transparency goes, any customer should be able to come in and say, how much do I owe yet on what I incurred in February? And I've got on a loan payment.
Yeah, and Ethan, you guys could probably even go back and look at history, payment histories right now and see who's gonna have the problems and who's not in some cases.
Will, will you have the ability to show the balance on this spiked debt along with the current bill?
That I honestly don't know if it'll have a balance going forward. I know certain other similar type programs like residents that are, receive leap benefits. It does give, gives the amount that was applied. It doesn't necessarily give from the grand total they received at the beginning of the year, like how much of that is left. It just basically still says, hey, you have a credit or, so that's something we'd have to confirm with CIC of whether it will literally say, hey, you know, you just owe $33 and it's a new line item on the bill or whether it'll say.
That'd be really good.
You know, this is payment.
Well, and the other thing I would, there's going to be some people that aren't going to be able to pay that balance quickly. But there's a lot of people that if they can't pay it this month, over the course of maybe the next four, five or six months, they will have it paid off, which is greatly gonna reduce our term amount on that $2 million we're borrowing from the state. So I concur. We need to send the bills out as they are, see what kind of revenue we can collect based on that. And then, like you said, if the state will let us renegotiate the terms on that loan, if we pay hopefully half of it. And then see where we're at. Because the lower we make that payment every month that we're obligated to pay, the better it's gonna be for everybody.
What I would hate, what I would hate to do, and I'm sorry. And you guys can talk me off the fence here. We get, we send those bills out, we get a bunch of people that are able to actually pay their full bill. And we pay more than what that loan amount is, not knowing whether or not we're gonna have the ability to be able to refinance the loan and get it lower potentially, right? The years that we've gotta pay it. And then the summer, when usage is lower, people don't pay it as often. We're gonna be stuck with the, with the bill if we pay everything upfront.
Don't, don't we need to maybe consider having separate accounts? We have an account for $2 million that came in, we're gonna pay out $2 million. But then we have, we're collecting from people and we need to have that in us, maybe a separate account to show if we have extra, hold on to the extra for the time that we have.
Make the monthly payments.
That we have lean months.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be handled. We'll have to, again, with CIC on the accounting side, see if, you know, we can set up a separate revenue because right now it would probably default going into just metered sales, which is a giant plot and that's, the auditors obviously want, when we've discussed them, they're, they want it to stay in the gas fund. They view it as a, you know, just the ongoing cost of the enterprise fund. We'll have to adjust the budget, obviously, to reflect all of this.
But it would just be another line item in the gas fund that we could put in there, right?
Essentially looking, and that's, you know, what, like talking with Pat, you know, logistically, we're gonna have to change some of the things we do just for the safety of the city. And, you know, we typically make transfers throughout the year to avoid sudden or, you know, drastic cash flow in and out of the fund from happening. But it might very much be, you know, going forward that we don't even consider transfers in the gas fund until the end of the year when we know we've had 11 months of good payment and what we, and then we're in the winter, obviously, as well.
At least till March.
One other question, didn't the county receive some FEMA money for utility bills? And then at Holstead eligible for any of that?
There was a certain amount, I believe, and there's, even in the American Rescue Plan, that's, that's coming. To my knowledge, the county, at least that first round of CARES Act money, that that all went out to nonprofits if they submitted programs for it. And I know like us locally, we've had discussions with neighbors, I mean, they're aware. And I think trying to do their part to plan for the fact that people might be asking for more assistance than normal. We haven't, on the American Rescue Plan, really found out. That first CARES Act money seemed to be more, had to be related to COVID specifically. I know there's been a lot of Representative Estes, I believe, wrote an open letter to the governor and the legislature saying that, you know, if the state gets this 1.2 billion from the American Rescue Plan, that they should look at making part of that. There's discussion of if the city of Holstead were to receive, you know, funds, again, what do you look at in terms of that kind of relief? I do know they did put more, they extended the LEAP program as far as the ability to apply and move the income guidelines a little bit to be more generous. So I do think the state knows that there's, you know, not just with gas, but also electricity, that there's some issues caused from this winter storm and they're trying to adjust. I think it's just gonna constantly kind of be moving and an updated thing as more cities start to bill out and Evergy and Kansas Gas figure out their plan and their rate stabilization as well. So.
And on the collateral side, we have expense there that should be part, it's an expense to the city. I mean, I'll see it any other way. It's not your expense, my expense. It's everybody in the city's expense. I think any expense we have there needs to be passed on. On Evergy's plan, I heard the other day that by year 2025, Jeffrey Energy Center and Lawrence Energy Center, the two coal-fired plants, are to be down. Now, are we gonna have any brownouts or blackouts from there?
Now, Ethan, are you needing action on this this evening?
I think consensus from you all as far as a max timeline. City Attorney Jance is working. We will have the, you know, normally we have a normal payment agreement. Form we use this, we're gonna create a new form because it's extended. But some, what Brad needs basically is the logistic of what is the max amount of time that we want to let someone spread this out? And at that point, we can, we can put that in and that becomes an internal document then. If somebody's requesting it, that just has them acknowledge it, you know, get some information that we can, again, trying to be fair to everyone of, make sure we have updated information to pursue if we need to, to collect that amount owed from them should they opt not to pay. And also them understand that, you know, that that becomes part of their utility bill going forward. So it's, can still trigger things of, that way people can't game the system and say, well, I'm paying my current bill, but I'm not gonna pay this amount I agreed to on my, on my own account every month. So.
I think like I was saying, I'm only comfortable with about 48 months. That buys us quite a bit of time. And then you look at it with, you said the most pretty much would be 2,500. So you figured that in, it's about 50 bucks a month for people to pay over that 48-month period. But again, I don't know, that's why I caution with paying a lump sum upfront, you know, when we get all these in, because I don't know what that's going to equate to the $17,000 a month.
Well, and that's our hope on the, again, I would think, hopefully on the, on the high end of the spectrum, the total gas bill itself would just be 2,500. And hopefully, people have been expecting this, that they can pay that down as much as they can so that we're only rolling, you know, that 2,000 or whatever for that 48 months.
You know, one blessing we might have on that, there's a lot of COVID money coming out and hopefully people are aware of the situation on gas and that'll be a thought on their mind to be able to utilize that to help pay utilities that they have consumed. Do we need to come up with a months or years right now? Or is that something we need to look at after you find out from the state if we can rewrite the loan and what our revenues are that have come in?
We will need that now because billing will go out. I mean.
I kind of agree with Mike. I think 48 months is sufficient. And if it poses a problem during the 48 months, they can come in and talk to Ethan and maybe get an extension if necessary.
And that could be set up, that could be set up, say, with a minimum monthly payment. If it's, if it's somebody that owes $100, we're not gonna carry that for four years. You know, we need to set up a minimum of 20, 30 dollars or whatever. That needs, and I think that's.
I think for Brad's purpose, he needs a term that he can put into the.
Yeah, and if you guys wanna see that of, I mean, that is a good point from Councilmember Farmer of if, basically anything we're gonna do that's gonna be across the board as far as like residential cannot go past 48 months in terms of the agreement or your monthly payment cannot be less than $5.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it, I think it needs to be not, not to exceed 48 months, 48-month period and then no less than.
I still think based on what the current bills are, you may run into an issue with that with some fixed income households.
Yeah.
I think we will have to make a few exceptions down the road and we can.
I think we leave that up to the discretion of staff.
Power to do that.
So start with a 48-month term max and then those special cases you'll have to evaluate, Ethan. Sound good?
Yeah, and then minimum.
I'd say minimum $20.
I would think so too.
I'd comfortable with that.
Any other questions regarding the natural gas situation, guys?
The only other thing I would ask for the council, obviously with our, our large industrial users, is just a consensus for you all to continue to work with them now that we know what the plan is in terms of billing, we can reach out to them and start to give them anticipated. It's just, again, the freedom or consensus from you all that it's okay for us to negotiate with them because, again, the dollar amounts we're talking there might not be as easily handled in a 48-month type agreement. Just a role, I mean, we'll obviously negotiate in the best interest of the city as a whole and that. But to be fair to all of them that also have businesses to run and I know even some of our Main Street businesses, I mean, we might need to, again, as, as the situation dictates, maybe deviate a little bit from the standard policy that's kind of been laid out.
Well, I'd, I'd say just have Brad get it put together, bring it to us, let us see exactly what the final product is at the, at the next meeting if we can.
The important thing to note, it's, you know, we're the city council and every citizen of this city is important to us. And the only thing we can do is try to make the best decisions we can with the conditions that are in front of us. And this is something that I hope we never have to go through again.
And the other thing to add is we're all in this together. It's not like we're exempt from the bills. It's, everybody's in the same boat.
Some of us with multiple houses. Okay, well, if we're done with this subject council, we'll move on to number four, which is a work session date.
Thank you.
And Ethan will enlighten us on the subject matter for that work session.
The two subject matter that we have slated, we're looking for a work session either the week of April 8th or the 15th. And the big item on this is kind of to present to you all the work that's been done as far as the softball diamonds. I believe you all received a letter from a concerned citizen about the conditions of the softball field through the Parks and Rec or the Recreation Commission, which is now the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. We have basically some various options to present to you all and say, you know, how do, how do we wanna, to approach this going forward? Some of those maintenance items that were in that letter, those have been or currently being addressed, like the condition of the fence. But again, this was the biggest, beyond the hospital and what might happen to that property, the baseball softball field and specifically the softball field, where it was the largest item in the strategic plan that had the most citizen activity or want to see the city do something. And before we get in a situation where we kind of did with the big diamond, we don't necessarily wanna go in and spend X, you know, if that's gonna make the project not feasible going forward or, you know, throw, throw a lot of money at something that's gonna be potentially looked at or revamped. So just to bring you all up to speed and get your thoughts on it, that would be the first. The second, which is a minor item, is just run you all some of the changes that the Senate Bill 13 is gonna do as far as budget, just to make sure you all understand that as we do the budget this year. The tax lid that you all have heard us talk about will no longer be in effect. But there's this new Truth in Taxation bill that was passed. But there's this new uh Truth in Taxation bill that was passed. Uh, that's an alternative that's gonna kind of um change our budget schedule a little bit and then just make sure that you guys are all kind of aware of the onus that's gonna put on you all in terms of, of the public hearing requirements uh under that bill. So those would be the two. And obviously, we're hoping, um, uncover a little bit more in my manager's report that we will have, I'm hoping we'll actually have it, it for the first meeting in April. But if for some reason we don't, we would talk uh two oh four Maine and, and options there as well. And those would be the three items we have for that work session.
I'm okay either week, any of the days.
Denise, what works for you?
Any day but Thursday. And I apologize 'cause I know I said Thursday and as soon as we got done with that meeting, I was like, oh my God, I'm teaching class.
Well, if we do it during the week of the eighth, we would be preceding city council or if we do it.
Oh, yeah, I was looking at March when I gave the, sorry, the week of March or April twelfth or April nineteenth. I apologize.
Okay, the twelfth or the nineteenth.
Yeah, the twelfth would be the meeting or the week of our first meeting.
Pick a date and time, Denise.
I'm good on either.
Yeah, I'm okay with either.
The onus is on you.
What day works for you, Denise?
Probably Tuesdays.
Tuesday?
What's that date?
Thirteen or twenty?
Yeah, thirteen through twenty.
So we'll have the council meeting on the twelfth and then we can do the work session on the thirteenth.
Works for me.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Thirteen, six o'clock.
Send out an email reminder, Ethan.
Just need a motion and to set that at April thirteenth at six.
Denise, you wanna make a motion?
I move, there's no further discussion, Mr. Mayor. I move that we set a city council work session for Tuesday, April, when am I putting this on? April thirteenth at six o'clock in the evening in the city council chambers.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, set the next work session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move same sign. That, we'll set that up. Now, we're gonna move on to our report section of our agenda. We'll start with the governing body tonight. I'm gonna start with you, Ed.
I have nothing, sir.
George?
No, nothing, sir.
Mike?
No, nothing.
Sam? Got a thing. Denise? Since the council's so quiet this evening, I'll, I'll pass it to Ethan for the manager's report.
Thanks, uh, just a, the few items this evening. And I figured I'd spare you all from hearing uh departmental activities statistics for a change. Uh, so city superintendent Adams, assistant superintendent Yance and myself met with MKC on the wastewater treatment plan alternative study. That report is just about at the point of being finalized and we will most likely be asking the council to schedule a work session to discuss that report when it is finalized and how the city wants to handle some of those needed and suggested maintenance and upgrades for the facility. Uh, the city has also received those finalized plans uh from the engineer for two oh four Maine. Uh, the city is currently waiting for contact from the contractors on the scope of the work. So the city has working estimates for demolition and stabilization and repair as a comparable price point to the fixing of the facade and roof. Uh, we continue to prioritize getting those estimates uh and continue to try and make contact with the construction companies that were suggested to us to provide those estimates on a daily basis. The city sent four assistant or department head level personnel to supervisory skills training uh that was conducted by the Public Policy and Management Center at WSU uh and took place at the Harvey County Courthouse. We did split those costs uh with both the city of Sedgwick and Harvey County to make the training more affordable for all of our entities. And I just wanna thank them for participating in that with us and then Harvey County for allowing us the use of their facilities. The city has made employment offers to two candidates for the utility maintenance worker positions and they are going to start on March twenty-ninth in their roles. And then the city also made an employment offer for the open deputy clerk position, um, who will be working on learning that utility billing system, uh, and that has also been accepted. And they will also begin on March twenty-ninth. So we're excited that those positions have been filled. And then we are currently in the middle of interviews for the director of administrative services and city clerk uh position. And we hope to have those concluded this week and an offer extended to a potential candidate. Uh, the date on that as far as start will be determined um later. And then, uh, while a majority of the time has continued to be spent on natural gas situation, uh, its financial impact to the city and then submitting the city's application for loan funding, uh, other city projects have continued to move forward in this time. The new storm sirens have been installed, one over by the pool and the other uh right around Tenth and Chestnut. And they are working and the project is just about wrapped up and ready to be submitted for reimbursement, which it was seventy-five percent of those costs uh via federal hazard mitigation grant program. Just wanna thank Director Lowe uh for helping me out on that and getting that to completion. City's consultant for Safe Routes to School Phase One project is preparing to conduct their use audit of current facilities, uh, which is the sidewalks, uh, in the coming weeks. And USD four forty will be helping with survey distribution um related to the project and well, as well. And that is all slated for um late March. So we continue working on the Safe Routes to School Phase One project. Uh, city is also looking at the possibility of applying for a Kansas Department of Transportation cost share grant uh for the potential street work this year, including the Main Street extension. Uh, it's a fairly competitive grant, but we figure we'll at least apply and, and see maybe if the state will donate some funds towards that in terms of grants. Uh, and then we continue to monitor and develop the American Rescue Plan, uh, which might see some additional money made available to the city of Holsted uh through that legislation. That money is anticipated though to have, you know, some pretty stringent what it can and cannot be spent for. Uh, so that's why we continue to monitor that. And then, uh, we've also just been keeping up with state legislation such as the Truth in Taxation and some other bills that will just affect us as a city and how we operate. And that is all I have to present tonight unless there are specific questions.
Any questions, council?
No, that's a lot of work.
Wouldn't you in your spare time, Ethan?
Things about the gas bill.
Well, if that concludes our agenda this evening, folks, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
I have the motion and the second.